You said, you all said. Um, let's see where we, okay. Well, um, good evening. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boulder Valley School District for April 28th, 2015. Sandy, will you please call the roll?
Albright?
Here.
Benford?
Here.
Belleville?
Fuqua?
Here.
Marquess?
Here.
Myers?
Reed?
Here.
Uh, please join me in the pleasurable allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to remind everyone who is here in the audience this evening or who is listening on television about the mission of the Boulder Valley School District. The mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. And if we'll keep that in mind tonight, I'm sure we'll have a great meeting as we remember why we're here doing our work. And I would just say that we just had a fabulous meeting with a group of students, which some people may want to comment on later, but students from every high school in our district. And it was just an informal discussion, listening to them, and reminds me at least of why we do this work. So, let's keep in mind the kids, the students, and the future of America. So, with that, Dr. Messenger, would you like to start our meeting off with your report?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Albright, members of the board. Welcome this evening, and I'm just going to build on Lori's comments. The Student Advisory Council, Dr. Mark Schaefer, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, sort of restarted, rejuvenated that group, the group of students this year. And so, Dr. Pilch and I and several other senior staff have had a chance to visit with them through the course of this year. And as you experienced in the last hour, they're engaging, thoughtful, and delightful young adults to be with. So, thank you for adding one more thing to your day and spending time in our circle of conversation. And I know that you gained from that, as I did, and I think the students did as well. So, my thanks to you and your time as members of the board, and thanks to our students, and at least one of which is in the audience. So, thank you for being here. So, anyway, let me transition to some other topics. Let me just put one note. We also started a middle school group that Mark's leading as well. And again, Deirdre and I were, Dr. Pilch and I were with them a week or so ago and engaged them in a 30 to 45 minute conversation about student assessment and accountability. And it was as thoughtful and as engaging a conversation that I've had on that topic in six months. So, anyway, our young adults, our students, are really well informed in this district, and I appreciate that. So, speaking of student assessment, let me talk, move to another topic that you've asked me to bring to this evening's discussion. So, I'll just mention this. So, one of the things that, one of the issues that's being addressed by our state legislature is will there be consequences to students or school districts if students opt out of taking the state assessment? So, there's a pending piece of legislation that's struggling a bit right now in the legislature addressing that. But, so that's an issue we've been watching closely. So, there's been the legislation around the kind and the amount of student assessment, kind of competing bills around that. But then this other bill around the potential consequence or not of students and families opting out. So, it's a great debate that's going on in this state and also across the country. And then, The Denver Post on Friday, I think it was reported in Chalk Beat, the education publication, this weekend, had an article about Secretary of Education Arnie Duncan, U.S. Secretary of Education in the department, saying, "No, we're not going to grant forgiveness to states or schools that don't participate at a 95 percent level, and the consequence could be the loss of federal funding." Now, Deputy Superintendent Pilch and I met with Commissioner Hammond a few months ago when we had a number of our high school students not participate in the fall assessment. And we had this conversation, I've shared that with you. So, I will just tell you, this evening, we've received no official communication on this issue from the U.S. Department of Education or the Colorado Department of Education. So, obviously, I'll keep you informed if we do. I think we've known from the beginning that this is a tension point around participation level, and we are not going to be at 95 percent in our overall level of participation in the Park slash CMAS assessment this spring. We certainly weren't in the fall. Now, we are, some schools exceed that, but not as an average by level, average by school district. So, we'll just see how this plays out. We're certainly not alone in the state of Colorado either of not having that level of participation. So, again, I don't have much more to add to that. Our federal funds that could potentially be impacted by this are mostly in special education and in Title I and career and tech education that exceeds $10 million annually for the Boulder Valley School District. So, obviously, it's, you know, we're interested in retaining those funds, and not just our district, but the whole state. So, obviously, we may need to begin to work with our U.S. Senators and congressional representatives on this issue as well. So, I'll keep you informed. So, the sequence this spring with our student assessment was we did the Park, Partial Year Assessment, which was given in March, and then we did the CMAS, the Colorado Measurement of Academic Success, in the last few weeks. And now, we are in the end of the year Park Assessment. So, we've been pretty much in a schedule, some student combination and staff since March on student assessment, and you're aware of that because we've shared that schedule with you. Different schools have different schedules, but basically, that's the window. I will just tell you that this was the first, last couple of weeks, the CMAS, which is in Science and Social Studies, the Colorado Measurement of Academic Success, that is a product, not Park. It is a product, a test, developed by the Pearson Corporation, contracted by the Colorado Department of Education to do this assessment. We piloted this assessment in the past, and we administered it to our students in the science last spring. So, you've followed some of that. I will just say there were significant issues of the administration of that test in our schools and across the state last week. And just, we've done, well, we're going to send you a report on this. It'll be a part of the bigger report, but we're still pulling data together. I mean, under Andrew's leadership and Jonathan Dings, we've done a pretty good look at our own systems, and we really think, for the most part, the problems we had with the administration wasn't our technology system, it wasn't our machines. These were server issues, students getting bumped off repeated times, and some of the drag and drop features of the, these were all online assessments, did not work as programmed. So, Pearson received a lot of feedback on this, obviously, as did the Department of Ed, the Colorado Department of Ed. And Commissioner Hammond sent out a message a week or so ago, just saying, "We recognize this as an issue, we understand we have a significant contract with Pearson, and we're working closely with them." So, we'll keep you informed on that, but in case you hear conversation about, gosh, last week particularly was difficult, we just left to school this afternoon and heard that when we left. And so, we are aware of that, and again, we'll give you a full report at the end of the test window this spring on cost, impact, those things that we've talked to you about before, but we're still collecting that data. So, I, but I wanted to give you a heads up that that was particularly troublesome administering the test the last week or two. So, real quick legislative update, we're working on multiple fronts right now, days are counting down, we're getting close to the finish line. I sent you a fairly lengthy email on the weekend that talked about the School Finance Act. Ten days or so ago, several of us from BVSD went down and met with Speaker Hollinghorst and said, you know, "We've got this idea, we think we ought to consider this." And some of us have been talking in the community about trying to capture the assessed valuation dollars that could come back to schools, and either now or in the supplementals later on. And so, I will just tell you that the Speaker received us and listened to our argument, and then she said, "And now you need to talk to Representative Hamner, who's on JBC, and visit with Joint Budget Committee." And so, we set up a meeting, and Dr. Pilch, Leslie Stafford, Bill Sutter, and I joined, we went down and joined our lobbyists to meet with Representative Hamner and legislative staff and said, "Here's our idea," and shared by several in the education community. We had a good hour-long conversation about that, about risks associated with it. But in simple terms, this is how it works, is that they, they being the state legislator, made some assumptions in the creation of the State General Fund budget around the appraised property value at all the school districts, and the state is an average of 7.8 percent is what they estimated the growth to be. Now, the actual valuations are coming in, Boulder County will be right at 19 percent. So, notably higher valuation property value in school counties impacting school districts. And so, what that will mean, and it'll be probably closer to 12 percent than 7.8 percent, it won't be as high as Boulder County's 19 percent, but it will be higher than they projected. So, what that will mean is every school district through their school mills will generate more money than they thought we would, and that money will go into the formula, and that will mean the state will need to give us less money from the state fund because we're generating more money. I mean, we can't use that money for anything other than the school funding formula because that's all prescribed. But, but our contribution to the equalization will be greater, 19 percent value increase. So, that means they send us a little less money to get it equalized. So, if you do that across the whole state, that results in real money, $70.8 million is what the estimate is. That will be money that's budgeted in the State General Fund that won't be needed to equalize across all the school districts. So, that's the theory. Well, it's more than a theory, we think it's reality. So, but the final property values aren't locked in until later in the year. So, what we proposed is to advance $70 million out of the state education fund now, so it would go to schools, and then when that money is available, because the school districts created more, then they could just backfill that money. So, we didn't make a lot of progress on that argument, but we made it. And, but what we did make some progress on was the idea that we ought to capture it all. So, any of that additional revenue that's not needed by the state to equalize should go to K-12 schools. And we, again, estimate that's going to be $70 million in this budget here. And that's the amendment that I sent to you on the weekend, that went to House Education Committee yesterday, and overwhelmingly was supported to approach today, the full house later this week. And so, we're working on the Senate side of this with the Republicans that have the control of the Senate, and we're favorable that it will pass. And so, what that will mean is not advanced money, but we'll talk a little bit later in the preliminary budget, that we think it's real money, and we believe it will flow, and it will flow this year. And so, I guess the good news is there's an increased awareness of the issue, and that we're working hard to make sure all those dollars that aren't needed to equalize at the state level aren't just used for other supplemental needs, which would be their preference, many of them, but instead dedicated to K-12 education. So, I want to just thank Speaker Hollinghorst and Representative Hamner for hearing us out on this, and for my colleagues joining me. We are working with Tina Mew and association leaders across the state with teachers and superintendents to mobilize contacts in some of the associations we all belong to, to encourage the support for that. Okay, so that's school funding. We'll talk a little more about that in our preliminary budget later. So, we're hopeful. That was a final hour's rush to get some extra dollars for schools. Student assessment, there's some competing bills going on, one in the House and one in the Senate. They're probably not going to agree, they're probably not going to get on the other side of the aisle and make that work. So, what we anticipate, that'll go to committee before the end of the session, and truth will be in there somewhere. So, I think overall, there'll be some reduction in student assessment. I think there's some question about what we will still ask high school students to do, and where that will take us, and, but I will just say, I think we're going to make progress on this issue. We still have a lot of issues to manage, both in the administration of these tests and the impact, but also probably coming back the next session and taking a closer look overall, is this still the right level of assessment? And clearly, given from what we've heard from the U.S. Department of Education, we're going to have to work beyond the state of Colorado to get this where we need it to be. And the final big topic I just want to mention is around student privacy, Senate Bill 173. Again, I want to acknowledge Andrew Moore, our chief information officers, work on this. He's been a leader, not only for our district in this discussion, but across the state. And again, this is really trying to find the right balance between appropriate protections and confidentiality for students and parents and families, and also having functional systems. And we think there's a path through there, but it's a political process. And so, a lot of good work has happened on that. We'll, again, brief you at the end of the session when the dust settles on that. I would just mention, we've been in contact with Congressman Polis just the last two days. Again, the federal legislation around the same issue that Jared is leading the charge on, we've been involved, again, from our district in that discussion. Jared's been very receptive and his staff to our input. We think this is both a federal solution that's probably necessary for the big, big companies, and also locally within school districts or within states. And I think Congressman Polis would recognize it's probably going to be a blending of both federal and state legislation that will, over time, get us to where we need to be. So, student privacy. I want to transition now to another topic, the TEL Survey, which is a survey administered to faculty every two years in the state of Colorado. We have participated in it before. Two years ago, Dr. Mew, President of the Association, and I communicated to all staff and said, "Let's do this survey, it's helpful data, it will give us some information about our own district, and it will let us look at ourselves compared to the state and the other districts." And so, you have to have 50 percent of the faculty in every given, well, for a given school to get the results back, at least 50 percent have to participate. So, you've got to get over that 50 percent threshold. So, that's kind of a high bar, just for voluntarily, "Let's go do it, you know, let's do it." So, we had a number of schools, more than in the past, that did it and made that, but we really did a push this year, and most of our schools exceeded that 50 percent threshold. So, those will be released to the public in early May. We've got the dance copies and embargoed copy that we can look at. So, we'll get word out to you when it's on the site and things. So, it's really, well, it takes almost an hour to take the survey, 45 minutes to an hour. So, it's a lot of data collection, which is a little bit of the pushback we've gotten because people are so busy. But, we do think it's helpful data for the reasons I said, that it's comparative data, and also, you know, it gives us a chance in a couple other dimensions to look at our own school, how we're doing instructionally, how we're doing with services. And again, this is, these are licensed professionals who respond to this, so it's not all staff, it's teaching staff and administrative staff, okay? So, that's the TEL Survey, I know you're familiar with that. And I want to give you a quick update on Casey Middle School. I know we've talked about that in each of our previous meetings, but I've been communicating a fair amount with you via email, and a lot has gone out to the Casey community. But this is the week, the week of April 27th, that we're doing the more intensive air sampling that Dr. Van Dyke from the Colorado Department of Public Health had recommended. And so, those machines are in and operative, and we were able to secure more sensitive devices, so they are, you know, get a little better measures than we've had before, measurements than we've had before. So, we feel good about those being in the locations he recommended. We also are getting, you know, really good readings from the fresh air oxygen mix in the building because of the rebalancing that we contract to have done over spring break. So, that remedy that we introduced, we believe is having the intended impact on the flow of air. And so, we'll know more from these tests, and then there'll be one more window like this. We'll continue some machines monitoring posts this week, but then there'll be one more window before school is out. We'll bring the intensity of the measurement back up again, bring all the machines back in. And so, this week, we'll be administering, I just saw the note go out this afternoon from Dr. Van Dyke to the, to Justin McMillan, the principal, and the Casey staff, to do their symptoms survey. That'll be online, collected by the Colorado Department of Public Health, and then they will analyze that data and give a report back to us. Dr. Van Dyke just said that might take a few weeks' time they get the data, get it analyzed, and get it back. But we'll do that one more time before the end of the school year, too. We'll have another week where we, you know, do the significant monitoring for the air quality and do another symptom survey, then we have three more episodes of that next fall. So, we're on the schedule recommended by the Colorado Department of Public Health, and feel like we're making good progress and working through that. So, just, that's just a quick update. Again, I think most of, most of you've read my messages on that, know what's going on. We sent a message out to the Casey community this week informing them of the same, it's all on their website also. When we receive the results, all that information will be made public as well, once the Department of Health has a chance to go through it. I sent you a note, it was in the camera this week, the Gordon and Grace Gam have made a notable financial contribution to help provide food and nutritious food products for our youngest learners, our preschool students. This is a project that several of us have been working on with Gordon and Grace Gam. This is a person who cares deeply about the well-being of our children, and he said, "You know, preschool children just should not be hungry." And we said, "We agree." And so, it's increased, Ann Cooper has been a champion on this, and as Ann does, she takes and runs with it, and so she's been helpful in her staff. And so, not only is this food made available for the children when they're with us, but fresh food products that go home on the weekends and holidays so that the family can have food stops. And also, what Ann described when we did this little recognition at Columbine last week, is that, you know, just families trying different foods and healthy, fresh foods, and that they might not normally, because as you know, some of those products are kind of expensive. So, Gordon and his wife, Grace, are, we are fellow Rotarians, and so, we're working with other service clubs and other folks who have resources that'd like to contribute to try to expand this to other schools. We have just a pilot right now, but our hope is to expand this to other schools in BVSD and beyond. So, anyway, if, I don't know if you know Gordon, but he's a great individual, and obviously, very generous, not just to the school district, you'll note, he's given other sizable contributions to other, I was just at the dairy for the art show a week ago, and they were, you know, celebrating the gift that he provided to them as well. So, at this time, I'd like to go to the podium and finish my final comments, if I could. President Albright.
And I'd like Dr. Deirdre Pilch. So, I wanted to just share with you, and you probably know this, but this is the conclusion of, well, not the final conclusion, but this is the last public education board meeting for the Boulder Valley School District that Deirdre will attend. And given that she's just accepted the superintendency in the Greeley-Evan School District Six, I don't think it'll be the last board meeting she'll attend. For those of us that have done this for our career know that they just keep on coming, you know, one good board meeting after another. But, I just wanted, we had a nice reception for Deirdre with our school community last Friday afternoon, and it was a good turnout, and it was a fun celebration of her service. But I wanted to do this before you and our community this evening. So, so let me give a little context. So, what most of you know, but I want to share, is that Deirdre came to the school district 12 years ago. And she came from a large, comprehensive high school in Lee Summit, and had a very successful career, 16 years in that school district, both as a teacher and as a school leader, and ultimately, the principal of a very large suburban high school. And relocated to Colorado, a desire to be closer to her family in Wyoming and northern Colorado, and so she's enjoyed that very much. And so, started her career with us at Centaurus High School, and it was a school that was really needing a positive boost of energy and leadership. And when your predecessor selected and employed Dr. Pilch to take on that role, they got just that in their leader. So, Deirdre did an excellent job leading Centaurus High School for four years, and the good work that she initiated there with that school community is still being enjoyed today, and Dr. Hanford's built on that. So, Centaurus is one of our gems, and I would just give a lot of credit to Deirdre's leadership to help give that school a jump and get started in really doing fine things for students. Following that, Dr. Chris King, who was my predecessor superintendent, recognized that when he hired Deirdre to go to Centaurus, that he knew she would also serve an important role in the school district beyond Centaurus. And so, invited her to come to this office to serve at the Ed Center as the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education. So, for a number of years, Deirdre supervised and led our high schools and middle schools, and it was during that time that this school district, under the leadership of the board and Deirdre and Dr. King, really took on a serious effort to increase our graduation rate, and did it in a big way, and has had significant positive impact. We just heard it from students that we were with the hour before. What a difference, the strategies, that what is unique about Boulder Valley is the individual investment we make in every child, 31,000. And it was under Deirdre's leadership that really a deep, thorough analysis of those things that help our students be successful, and those things that maybe get in their way and get those obstacles out of the way, which is still in our vision, mission, and goals as we continue that. We exceed 92 percent graduation rate, which is well above the state average, well above the national average. And I just want to give credit where it's due, and I think in a large part, that's due to Deirdre's spirited leadership, and also those who followed and worked with her on that. And then, two and a half years ago, I had the opportunity to invite Deirdre to serve as deputy superintendent. And so, what I recognized, like my predecessor, is that there was talent there, and I didn't want to lose that talent from our school district. So, I approached those of you who were on the board at the time, which is all of you, and said, "Will you support me if I make the appointment of Dr. Pilch as deputy superintendent?" And you all supported that without question, that you're thrilled that she was still with us and still working with us. So, at that time, Deirdre stepped in to serve as deputy, and part of our pact was that we worked out together, because she was anxious to go be a superintendent. And I knew that, and I kept convincing her that she wasn't quite ready yet, which really probably wasn't truly honest. But, I said it anyway, because I really wanted her to stay, because I knew the big work that we had before. As Ed, you might recall during those two years, some of the big work that we've done together with your leadership and with Deirdre's leadership, is that we had a significant consensus work in the fall, in November 2012, where we brought hundreds of our community members together. She was also with us, and we worked consensus with a contract with the Teachers Association, and reached a good agreement there. And then, we went to our community, and we said, "We need to work on a new vision, mission, and goals." And we spent seven months doing that, and then June of 2013, you approved vision, mission, and goals for the district, then you turned to Deirdre and myself and said, "Okay, now make it happen, operationalize it." So, we went to work creating what we refer to now as the success effect, our strategic plan, how to operationalize that, and you've received several reports on that. And I'll give credit again where it's due, and we've had a lot of people working on this, but it's been Deirdre's focus and her drive and her insight that has helped us get to where we are today. So, we're launching, as we say, we're launching the strategic planning effort, the success effect, and more to come on that. And I really regret that she's got passing grades to become a superintendent, because I really would have liked to have her stay and help me get through some of that. And then, we had that other little project, the bond. And so, last year, when you said, "We're going for it, and we're going for the biggest package, and we're going to do it," what Deirdre and I and many others in this room and beyond said, "That'll take some work." And so, our fall schedule, as you know, and many of you joined us on those, we did one presentation after another. So, we were working from seven in the morning through the noon hour with service clubs and into the evening with city councils and others, really with many others carrying the message that it's, this is the right thing to do for our schools. And so, our community, by 61 percent, voted for a bond issue. And so, now, we're going to work on designing the future of the school district around our facilities and our strategic plan, and they'll go hand in glove together. So, with all that said, it is the spirit and the strength and the talent that Deirdre brings to our district that we have enjoyed for now 12 years, and won't have a chance to enjoy in this boardroom going forward, although we've got an incredible transition plan that we've been working on. So, I would like to, on behalf of the Board of Education and my colleagues in this room and beyond, present Deirdre with a certificate, and I'd like to read it to you. "So, with deep recognition and gratitude, Dr. Deirdre Pilch, for 12 years of outstanding leadership in the Boulder Valley School District, we want to recognize her. Dr. Pilch leads with passion, commitment, to provide quality education for all students so they experience success in school and in life. Deirdre, your courage and strength as you take on these new challenges inspires all of us. We wish you the very best as you pursue your dreams and your professional aspirations, under my signature, on behalf of our board and our entire school community. So, congratulations on your next opportunity, and thank you for your service."
Thank you. So, I'm, I am humbled by your recognition. I, you know, I, I have the privilege of, of having my career shared with you all, and the wonderful work that I've had the honor to do in the district. But, you know, many people leave our system and leave us in just as good standing as I do, and, and don't have the opportunity to have that kind of recognition because they haven't been in the position of deputy superintendent. And so, I, I thank you for the recognition, I thank you for using the podium for that. But, I could not have done all the things that Dr. Messenger named had it not been for the remarkable colleagues with whom I have worked, here at the district level as well at the building level. We have truly, truly amazing teachers, support staff, and administrators, and parents and community members in the Boulder Valley School District. And it is because of all of us working together that I've been able to, to realize some of my, my best dreams as an educator. And I thank Boulder Valley for that, I thank you for the opportunities you've given me, and especially for Centaurus High School. So, thank you.
So, we underframe this really pretty so that she can hang that in her office, so everybody knows that her experience in Boulder Valley. And, as you know, I spent a little time in Greeley-Evan myself, and so it's with great pride we do this sharing of Deirdre to lead their district, so thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, thank you, thank you.
That's a hard act to follow.
So, that concludes my report, Dr., or Dr. Albright, thank you.
Good.
I'd be glad to answer any questions from my comments or questions about Dr. Polis's leadership as well, so, any questions you might have.
Okay, good. So, board members, are there comments or questions from Dr. Messenger's report or comments about Deirdre who we're going to miss? Shelley?
We will miss you, Deirdre, so much. Thank you for your service, appreciate you. Bruce, I have a question about this opt-out business.
Yes.
I don't really understand how the federal government thinks that they're going to be able to control parents who want to opt out.
Right.
Can you say more about how you think that's going to work?
Well, that's the tension, I think, that we're all feeling, and I think the legislators are feeling as they wrestle with their own state legislation around this. I think what, you know, I think what happened is that this kind of became a tipping point because of the excessive amount of testing and some of what was happening nationally. I think people just said, "All right, enough is enough." And so, you know, it's not that they couldn't, parents couldn't have exercised this before, and some did. But I think it just, it was just that tipping point. And so now I think it really has begged that question about really? I mean, who has that authority and does the state or the federal government really have that authority? So that's the tension point. And that's certainly what we have had conversations with at the state level and I'm assuming now we'll have it at the federal level. So, you know, here is the part of this that I didn't elaborate much on is that they, part of what the U.S. Department of Education has done in recent years is created these contracts with states so that we could move away from some of the parts about no child left behind that were sort of nonsensical and didn't work. So then we created these agreements and many states have entered into them. And part of that agreement stipulated that we would have this high level of participation. And so, and that's really what Commissioner Hammond and the State Board reengaged the Secretary Duncan on and said, we'd like that reconsidered. And that was his response that was then published in the paper last week, that they're not willing to alter their expectation around that participation level. So, and again, we're not the only state or school district that finds themselves in that situation. So I think we're going to just have to, Shelley, see how this sorts out. I mean, I understand the quandary for all involved now. So, you know, I guess our hope still is that we can get to that better balance we talk about with state assessment in the state and locally so that we can turn back around and really encourage our students and families to participate in the test because it has value and that we can, you know, get back to where we were before and exceed 95%. I mean, I guess that'd be my hope. But some of the messaging we've done with legislators this session is that work with us on this, we really are going to have to see it a change because if it doesn't really change, it's going to be hard for us to get people, parents and staff, students back on board with this. So I think we just don't know. I think we're going to just have to keep working this. But I think what we can influence now will be the nature of the assessments and the quantity. We'll try to influence that through state legislation, hoping that if we get to a better place, that we can, you know, not have to worry about this participation. I mean, I think it'll still be an issue just because we've gone there now and it may be hard to come back. But that's about all I know, Shelley.
Well, I would just hate to see, you know, the federal government put so much pressure on the states and the states push that down in the districts and us push it down on the parents so that we actually damage our relationship with our parents.
Right.
Because of funding issues.
Right.
And I can easily see that happening.
Yeah.
And we, you know, we've already had a concern about kindergarten assessment.
Yeah.
Expressed.
Yeah.
And that's, that's an example of what could happen here if the government's not careful and if we're not careful.
I appreciate that, Shelley. You know, we've worked and I've shared this with you before, but we've worked really hard to capture the energy and the passion around this issue from parents and students and really try to direct it and support it towards the decision makers as opposed to just getting internal conflict over it. But when those pressures come back out is that that's going to be a struggle, I think. So, yeah, we'll try to keep it healthy and balanced.
Just as a follow-up to that, Laurie, is there, I know you may not track the federal level as closely as the state, but with the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind, you know, I read about different amendments that have been offered. And there seems to be some bipartisan support for reducing those federal requirements. Do you have any hope there at that level?
Well, our conversation with, it's really been Senator Julianne Herman is who we've been working with, a staff member with Senator Bennett's office. In fact, you know, she, I've shared, I think, a couple of those correspondence with you. She's been kind of our primary contact and we have been involved in those conversations. The last conference call that Dr. Pilch and I had with Julianne was that they're still looking at annual assessments for grades three through eight and once in high school. So, I mean, they're not obviously dictating from the federal level which those tests are, be it Park or, I mean, it has to be a certain kind of test. But, and they're probably not dictating that there can't be more flexibility like some states have entered into and that we're encouraging to let districts maybe substitute those tests if possible. So, but I, my sense is there will still be an accountability requirement that's not notably dissimilar than maybe under, has been under No Child Left Behind, which is really three through eight and once in high school. Now, I think the difference maybe is if this level of participation. I think that may be because this, what Shelley described about the parental piece, again, is playing out at the federal level as well as it is in each, many states across the country. So, but the challenge with this is if only some students take the test, it really invalidates the whole assessment because then you've got your demographics that aren't balanced. And so it really makes it lose value pretty quickly. So, but we are working on the reauthorization. So I certainly am hopeful that they'll at least wade into that, Sam.
Any other discussions about the testing before we get off? I know I've worked as a school psychologist, a school counselor, and I understand the value of these tests, but I have been very concerned and have expressed it to our legislators about the depth and the time that these take. And it's real troubling to me as a professional person, no longer working as a school psychologist, but as a professional school psychologist, not being happy with the way these have gone. I would also say as a mother of two kids who have graduated from Boulder Valley School District, I had a tough time getting my kids, my own two kids, to do some of the things that I thought they should do. And it's just pretty outrageous.
You know, I would agree with Shelley. You didn't quite say it as directly as I am, but it's just outrageous for the federal government to be saying what parents should be doing with their own kids. And I just think it's a message that, you know, we need to continue to share with our public and our legislators at all levels, state, federal level. So, thank you for your work on this and for others who are being involved in this assessment. It's, it's not helping our kids and it's not helping our schools, this conversation. It's troubling.
Are there other comments on other issues, board members? Jim? Dana? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I would just say something about Deirdre and I'm a little caught off guard because I didn't realize today it was your last day here as a board person. But, so I would have prepared remarks, I think even. But, you know, I've, I've served on this board for almost eight years and have always relied on you for honesty, for integrity, for being accessible, for so many conversations, like what do we do here? What's the best idea? And just for your good judgment. So your experience and judgment, I think are what I will miss the most here as we go forward without you. I think Greeley is lucky to get you. I hope you'll check in periodically and let us know how you're doing. I, I don't know, do you let visitors come to your board meetings up there? I might come up and watch. You know, I'm proud of the work you've done and you've made this district be a much better district. And I know I also have heard that not just from the board, but also from people out in the community, from senior staff out who trust you and rely on you for problem solving with the most crazy kinds of things that happen in schools with kids and teachers and staff. So you will be missed and I wish you good luck and have a good time in Greeley. We'll miss you. So, thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. The next item, let's see, would be public participation, but Sandy, I don't think we have anyone signed up. Okay. The next item on our agenda is board communication. Board members? Any comments? Sam?
I just want to echo the comments about the Student Advisory Council meeting that we just had and thank Mark Schaefer. Thank the members of the council, including Daniel from Monarch High, who stayed for the board meeting. Thanks for observing us. It was a very impactful hour, really as impactful as any I've had in recent memory as a board member, you know? And I hope we could perhaps have some additional opportunity. Not, I mean, everybody's busy, including the kids, as we heard, but maybe hear from them a little more often. And I would love to hear from the middle school students as well.
Both the great groups.
Yeah. That was really terrific. And I would just add my gratitude, Deirdre, to your work. I wish we'd had more conversations, but your genuine commitment to all kids, to at-risk kids in particular, and the legacy you've left in this district is powerful. Like Lori, I hear it from folks I know in the trenches, the respect is deep. And I don't know anybody on the school board in Greeley Evans, but they sure look pretty smart to me on this decision. So good luck and I hope you keep in touch.
Okay. Okay, Shelley?
I want to thank Mark too for getting the student group back together. And I'm wondering, Bruce, are they going to be coming occasionally to report to the board like the last group used to?
Yeah, we're, so we're having a conversation about that, about, you know, making the best use of their time and of your time. We went to this format this evening so it could be more conversational. So, not that reporting doesn't have value as well, but, you know, so we thought we'd maybe experiment with some things. And certainly by December, our plan is to have a delegation that will join us for the state conference with the school boards, which we didn't have this last year. So, you know, that's one event we would do each year. But yeah, so we'll, we'll visit about it and then we'll maybe bounce some ideas off of members of the board to see. And maybe it's a combination of both of those things. But, you know, we want to be sure that it's engaging and dynamic as well.
Yeah, and I agree that it would be great to hear from the middle schoolers. So there's a way to do that.
Sure.
Well, I would also just say thank you for arranging that. And Mark, thank you for putting that together. It was great and it was really informative and interesting and very powerful. And it helps us remember, I think, why we were here, while we're here and how important it is to hear from students. I mean, they're the people who are out there in the trenches every day, learning. And as I said, as I advise them, I hope that they continue to stay involved and someday maybe they'll run for the school board. Run for the school board. Be great. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the, is an informational item. It's a six-month update on the bond program implementation.
Great.
So, Bruce?
I'm going to do a brief set on this, President Albright, and I think Don Orr is going to do the presentation. We have a PowerPoint. We, I, just a little bit of context, you know, I mentioned earlier in my comments the great success of our community supporting our bond in November. And so you know, because you've approved a few contracts and you've been briefed on this, but we sold $250 million worth of bonds about 10 days ago, two weeks ago maybe now. And so we're just starting phase one, getting work done on a weekly basis. Don Orr, our Assistant Superintendent for Operations, Leslie Stafford, our Chief Operation Officer, Deirdre Pilch, our Deputy Superintendent, and I meet for 60 to 90 minutes and really plan this step-by-step and work with a lot of other operations staff and educational staff on next steps in our cabinet. So what we wanted to do this evening is just, and we'll just probably do this from time to time because there are a lot of moving parts. And so we're not going to tell you about all of them because there are a lot of them. But from a board level, we wanted to just provide, we want to provide you with an update as to where we are. And again, we'll do this from time to time. I mean, some of the things will become more obvious when construction starts and things, but we're kind of still right now pre-construction, but not for long. And so as you know, we have phase one, which is a dozen schools or so, and we're starting a fairly intense work with them right now. So before I finish and give all of Don's presentation, I'll stop and Don will bring up the PowerPoint and we'll do a presentation on this. And really it's intended to be more of an informational item. There aren't any decisions around this this evening, but just an update, okay? So, Don Orr, please.
Great, thanks very much. I wanted to give you a quick update. I've got about a dozen slides or so. I'll try to go through them quickly, identifying the progress that we've made on, on the bond program so far. So since the bond passed last November, we put a, have been putting plans in place for a successful implementation. We've made considerable progress and have begun design work for some projects. I'll talk a little bit about those as we get into this. Let's see here. The bond program will be implemented in three phases, similar to what we did in 2006. We have established the phase one project lists. Phase two and three will be determined at a later date. And what we use as our rationale to determine projects that were included in phase one were the projects that would have direct impact on student learning. Those are the projects where we're bringing air conditioning, for instance, into, into our schools. The more complex projects that require extensive planning, longer programming planning times, like our replacement schools in Erie Campus, projects that can be completed in 2016, and then charter schools that have already completed early design work, Peak to Peak and Summit are examples of that. We began energy audits in March. We put together some DATs this spring. Some work will occur this summer at site work at our, excuse me, our middle schools and some phase work we plan to have complete by 2016. We've gone on record as accelerating the opening date for the Erie Campus to 2017. In early March, the bond team hosted Bond 101 for the phase one principals. The purpose of the workshop was to give principals an overview of what to expect on their bond projects and what their responsibilities will be. Topics covered included the design advisory team process, sustainability, communications, educational innovation, safety and security, and the construction process. The bond program, as you know, is going to be managed in-house. We've hired four additional project managers to augment our current project management team. Using internal staff provides the highest level of institutional control and capitalizes on their experience and knowledge of district facilities. Additional staff have been hired or will be, will be hired to cover the other functions, including a buyer who will handle procurement and contracts, a financial analyst, an innovation director will work with the bond team and school principals to infuse design principles related to educational innovation into the bond projects. This person will also work with Mary Jo Boe to provide professional development to educators. More information regarding educational innovation will be provided later in this presentation. A bond director, this position has been posted. They'll oversee the day-to-day operations of the bond team and will report to the Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services. We've looked at space at the Ed Center and Arapo Ridge and have and will continue to remodel that area to house the new staff. Some current staff will have to be relocated to accommodate that. Since the bond passed November 17th, solicitations have been issued for professional services or products. Architects, we pre-qualified 24 architects. And for each phase one project, three firms have been asked to propose a bid or submit pricing for that work. We will have signed contracts back from the architects on May 4th and expect to bring them to the board for approval on May 12th. We have issued a number of RFPs for professional services such as asbestos abatement, moving, energy consultation, et cetera. And we will also be pre-qualifying construction companies for construction manager, general contractor services. For some of our larger projects, such as the rebuilt schools, we intend to use the CMGC contract arrangement. And this arrangement brings the contractor into the project during the design phase to provide input related to cost and constructibility and can result in overall cost savings and a higher quality of projects. Also tonight, you're, you're going to be asked in the consent agenda to approve a software package that will allow us to track schedules and budgets. We plan to issue three sets of bonds over the course of the entire program. The first set, totaling $250 million, was issued the 14th of April to fund phase one. The district's bonds carry high, high-grade ratings from Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's and Fitch. And the bonds were offered using a competitive bid process on the internet. We received six bids for the full amount of the issue. The best bid was submitted by Morgan Stanley with a true interest cost of 3.857%. And these bids received reflect the bond market's very high level of confidence in the district, which results in lower interest costs for the district and its taxpayers. The bond team is working to fulfill the school board's commitment to open and transparent implementation of the bond program. The bond communication specialist is a member of the bond team and the position's primary responsibility is to share the news and promote the accomplishments of the bond program. The bond communication plan has been updated and we are currently in the process of developing a new bond website and logo. We will use the design advisory team, the DAT process in bond projects to ensure decision-making is community-based and that projects meet the needs of individual schools. The DAT is a group of representatives from school, from the school community, including faculty, school staff, parents, neighbors, and the principal who work with the architect to develop the schematic design for the project. As the primary users of the building, the DAT members have the most knowledgeable perspective on how the building needs to function. And the DATs will vary in size depending on the complexity of the project. Another function of the DAT is to act as a liaison with the school community by sharing information and communication, communicating the progress of the project. The DAT members also will bring the perspective of their stakeholder groups to the design. The ballot language also calls for the creation of a citizens' bond oversight committee. The committee provides independent review and monitoring and oversight of implementing The DAT members also will bring the perspective of their stakeholder groups to the design. The ballot language also calls for the creation of a Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee. The committee provides independent review and monitoring and oversight of implementation of the projects in the bond program. The committee is comprised of representatives of each community in BVSD with relevant professional experience. The group was valuable for creating trust and goodwill with the implementation of the 2006 bond. As you know, we called for applications in February. We received over 60 applications. We had a pool of exceptionally qualified candidates, and tonight, the board will approve those appointees. The first meeting, we expect to occur this spring. A major theme of the bond program will be creating learning environments that support innovative approaches to teaching and learning with the goal of giving students the skills they need to be successful in the 21st century. Starting this spring, BVSD will consult with Fielding Air International, known around the world for creating innovative learning environments, to define how to create the best learning environments for our students. The outcomes of this process will infuse educational innovation into every bond project and create learning spaces that support success for all students. Funding is identified for innovation for every project. The construction of four new schools through the bond program provides the opportunity to build innovative learning environments from the ground up. These new schools will become innovative exemplars, illustrating what is possible in terms of innovative school design and instruction. We have hired an innovation director who will lead these efforts. This position will provide guidance to schools regarding investing their innovation dollars. She will also develop professional learning for educators related to teaching in these new learning spaces. That's a quick overview. You can see we've been extremely busy. We've got a lot of excitement on the team. Our new staff hires are exceptionally talented. I look forward to working with them, implementing this bond, and coming back to you with additional progress reports as we move forward. Thank you.
So Lori, I don't know if there are any questions. I'd be glad to try to respond to them, or if there's just comments. But we, again, this is a pretty quick snapshot, but we thought that kind of helps you keep the running record. And again, we'll communicate with you via email and other ways as things unfold. But again, on your agenda, consent agenda this evening is your consideration of the CBAC committee appointments. And I know that a couple of you helped us with that process, so thank you for that. So anyway, Lori, I'd be glad to answer any questions if there are any. Thanks.
Okay. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Jim?
No question, just a comment. It's amazing how fast you can go from a campaign to, oh, gosh, now we have to go do all the things we said we were going to go do. So I appreciate all the work. And I get questions in the community, especially being Erie. How excited they are about getting a school, how excited they are about having a track at Angivine. So a lot of excitement building in the community. And I know from your past work that you'll do nothing except exceed expectations. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah. Lots of energy.
Anyone else? Shelley?
Thank you for the update, Don. That's helpful. You know, after our experience at Casey this year, I'm really concerned about indoor air quality at our schools. And so, I'm wondering what steps we're going to take in this bond to make sure that we don't have another situation where people are affected. And I also have a follow-up question, which is, you know, my understanding is that it's partially due to the LEEDs construction of that building. And I'm wondering if we're going after LEED certification in our new schools. And if we are, why would we do that? What are the benefits of that compared with the potential costs? Just some understanding of that whole issue.
So, two topics. Let me address each individually. One is the air quality issue. And so, there were hundreds of details that we worked through this in the spring. But one of the aspects of this bond is really looking at every air handling system in every school and every new school. So it is, so to either replace or recommission every system. That was a part of the bond, because, you know, with the exception, maybe, our newest schools, they are all dated and some of them just need replaced. And so, that, there's the air conditioning phase of this, which you're familiar with. But beyond that, it's every school. So that, now, you might recall that Dr. Shaughnessy, in his report, a month or six weeks ago now, his recommendation was that we would actually embrace an indoor quality, indoor air quality program is for all schools. And so, the timing is actually great. And so, we've not gone very far down that path, just in planning. But I think that some of what Dr. Shaughnessy offered to schools across the country, and worked closely with us at Casey the last few months, is really, you know, addressing air quality issues to make sure. So it's really perfect timing for us. And so, as we go school by school, either new construction or remodels of schools, in addition to doing the recommissioning, I think we'll look to Dr. Shaughnessy and the expertise he brings and others to say, all right, so if we do these things, are we addressing all the areas that he would recommend as an indoor air quality expert that we consider? So, yes, to answer your question briefly, yes. We plan on doing that, and it was in our plans. This probably just makes it more formal. And I think, given a lot of the awareness of this issue now in our community with regard to the Casey conversation, I think it's a chance for us to both champion that as well and make it as a part of our whole communication about the value of our schools and the health of our schools. So, we'll give more detail on that once we get further down the path. But yes, that will be our plan. With respect to the LEED certification, again, I don't think today we have the answers to what level of sustainability and efficiencies we'll pursue in the new school constructions. That's primarily where that would relate to, so the four campuses. So I wouldn't say yes or no around the LEED certification. I think we'll look at that. I would just say that from my non-indoor air quality expertise that I have, so this isn't my area of expertise, I really do believe most of the contributing factors to our challenges at Casey were more mechanical failures or just materials failures around the pipes and the pizza traps and a number of things that really weren't related to the LEED certification. But I think, you know, we'll certainly, you know, look at that. And I think that if, we certainly won't compromise indoor air quality to achieve some status. I mean, we'd like to find that right balance between sustainability, efficiency, and quality error. So I mean, I think as we design, this was definitely on our radar. One member of the team that will serve with precautionary and the FNI group that Don referenced, one, so it's a multi-member team, but one of the team members will work with Dr. Gita Carroll, our Sustainability Director, and our staff to look at efficiencies and energy, not just our new schools, but all of our schools. So I would just say we're on the front end of those discussions, Shelley. And clearly, we're, our eyes are, you know, we're watching for this indoor air quality. It's a big issue. And we'll talk more about the LEED credentialing as we progress with this and, you know, visit with the board about that. But I'd just say no decisions have been made at this date.
Well, you know, one of the things that I learned through this whole Casey conversation was how incredibly complicated the ventilation system is at Casey. And, you know, there may be some air quality issues at some of our schools, but we certainly haven't heard about them the way we have this school. So it makes me concerned that we might be putting in equally complicated systems, where the systems we have now might actually be working fine. So I hope we're just being discerning about every school and whether we need to make it so complicated that we might end up with another issue like this or not.
So I think the heat exchange system at Casey that has huge efficiencies, which we enjoy and appreciate, is part of what contributed to just the complexity. So clearly, we're smarter about that today than we were three months ago about that system. And so, lessons learned about how to manage that complex system. I think the other is that we'll be anxious to see, now that this rebalancing is complete at Casey, and we believe we're in a much better place, how stable is that? I mean, our assumption is it'll be very stable. But I mean, that'll be, you know, time will tell with that. Is, are we going to be back in this tinkering with it frequently? Or is it now stable, and we can go back in three months and six months and three years and be just as confident? But that'll help inform us. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Other questions?
I had a question about the DATs. Are they starting? I mean, we've got work starting this summer. I've heard from a couple of community people in a couple of schools that they were starting and then stopped.
Stopping.
So where are we?
Well, a couple of them, we had to grab by the belt and pull back a little bit. So the good news is we got really motivated, anxious people to get going with this. I mean, so we've been working on this. Partly, what is unique about this bond that Don described is the work we're doing around this innovation piece and the design piece. So it's a little bit different than we've done before. So we just, we need to get these synchronized, so we don't get down the path and have to bring people back. And so, we're working this week, actually, some planning about how do we coordinate that. So you're right, we have slowed a couple of groups down, and some groups haven't formed yet. But we're absolutely going to have them. And what we want to do is make sure we don't waste people's time. So we want to, you know, get the timeline established, which we're going to, working on right now. So we have, we've asked folks, a couple of groups, to just pause, hang on for just a minute. But absolutely, we will. And we just want to be sure, again, that they have the information they need going forward, because we're coming at this a little bit different. Because we want these elements around the innovative practices that will be worked on as a district. These won't dictate what happens to those design teams, but it will help inform their work. So we just want to be sure that we don't get too far out with the planning and then try to introduce that. We want to introduce it from the beginning, so they consider as they go forward. So, yeah, we're working with them right now. We've been communicating again this week with, our principals, really, are our primary contact with that.
Right.
Yeah. So absolutely going to do it, absolutely going to be representative. We just needed to get our sequencing down a little bit. So we had a little stutter step.
And so, kind of, as a follow-up, so when is the innovation staff? When will they be hired?
So, the consulting firm, FNI, was a contract you approved in the last meeting. And so, we're just starting work with that. We did a WebEx conference with them 10 days, two weeks ago. And we're doing some personal kind of work with them this week. And then, really kind of laying that timeline that you just asked about now. So they'll be with us in present from this time forward, as their work schedule allows and the deliverables. And then, our new innovation director technically starts July 1, but we've been able to work with the neighboring district, of which she comes to do some work with us ahead of time. So Tiffany will be joining us some days between now and July 1, but officially onboard full-time on July 1. So all of it's kind of coming together with our new project managers and things.
So mostly, the DATs will work?
Late summer, fall will be when a lot of the work occurs. Yeah. I mean, well, you know, it's May. It's a busy time. And we, we'd love to work all summer, but, you know, that's not a great time. We lose people. So we'll do some work around this, but we know we just, it's difficult. I mean, we'd love to have that three months, but we'll lose some time this summer. But certainly, in the fall, we'll do some visioning activities and really get our stride going by fall.
Okay. And so, for the new elementary schools, I'm thinking of Creekside and Emerald and Douglas, when do they project? I mean, we're going to, do they have one year?
So, fall of '17 is what we've talked about. We are reviewing that timeline. That's two years from this fall. But part of this, how we get started, and then the summer break, and, I mean, there's certain things, first things have to happen first. And so, we will be reviewing that timeline. We absolutely, what I've asked Don, and Don agrees, is that we're going to do it right. And if we have to adjust our timeline to do it right, then we'll adjust our timeline. But our target date is fall of '17, or at least the '17, '18 school year, okay?
Okay.
But more to come on that. That's actually work we're doing the next 10 days.
Are there questions or comments? Well, I would like to thank you, Don, for the presentation. Thank you. And thank your staff for the work they're doing.
Lots of time.
I know, it's exciting and new and creative and real important work. So please express our thanks for the work they're putting in for this. It's great. It's real exciting stuff. Okay, let's see. What's the next item? The next item, the next item on our agenda is the superintendency evaluation process. And so, Bruce, you can talk about it.
Don't we get it started?
Get it started, please.
So in your electronic packet, materials attached, is the policy that was approved in 2011, about the time I arrived in the district. I believe this was part of the process, some of you know better than I, that the board went through as a part of their whole review of expectations around the superintendency and embedded, so I've had some conversation with Attorney Dick Bump about this, that the intent of this policy was to capture the expectations of the Board of Education with regard to the superintendent's, their performance expectations. And so, in that policy, as you have a chance to look at that, it's broken into areas, domains, that, you know, and then some sub-bulleted items that relate to that domain and that area. So areas such as operations, my responsibilities, and organization and personnel, finances, relationships with the staff and the community, and so, and then there are those sub-bullets. And so, there was some frustration expressed by members of the board the last couple of years with the tool we were using. I helped create it, so I can take some criticism. We created a tool for feedback that got a little cumbersome, maybe was a little repetitive at times. And so, I just heard the board say last year, maybe we ought to relook at this. And so, I thought, well, gosh, let's go to my position description. Maybe that'd be a good place to start. So then, that took me to this policy. So I had some conversation with Lori and with Jenny about this, as leadership of the board. And so, one, we wanted you to look at this again, if you weren't familiar with it, if we hadn't looked at it for a while. So what we had talked about, so this is kind of what we wanted to float out tonight, is that we would, in fact, Sandy's already done it, is that really move this into a format that if you were to, on electronic format, if you were to respond, you'd go, so under like the area of operations, the superintendent shall, then it has multiple items listed, not ask you to evaluate every one of those, because that was some of what got cumbersome in the last one. But really, look at that whole area or domain of operations and be informed by each of those sub-bullets. And then, there would be a place to give a rating of your perception of my performance in that area, and then a place for comments, you just type them in, and suggestions. And so, then, the beauty of our Google system is that those would all be collapsed into one common format, so that we just, operations, all your input would be listed there, and then each of the areas. So that would give us kind of a, an accumulation of your feedback regarding my performance in each of these areas. And then, that would be shared back with the full board, so you could see your perspective, but those of others. And that's kind of what we've done before. We just thought it might be less cumbersome, and it is related to what you have in policy around expectations. And then, then I, what we've done before is that has served to inform the president. And last year or two, Lori's actually drafted that a summary statement of that, which is what is presented to the public and is placed in my personnel file, which would reflect your thoughts as a result of that. That's kind, that part would stay much the same. And, but it would give us a tool to provide feedback and make suggestions around areas of improvement in my performance. And so, that's the suggestion, I guess. And if you're favorable to that, I think, you know, it might be we just have to try it and then see, does it feel like it covers all the right areas? Or maybe it has some of the wrong areas, maybe you want to change the policy. But anyway, that's what we have in policy now around your expectations of this position. I would just say if we proceed with this approach, we've got, we have scheduled a work session the third Tuesday of May, right now, that's for, on the superintendent's evaluation. So probably, if that's to your favor, we would, I would work with you in executive session and present an update of how progress, I think, we're making in all these areas and work that I'm doing for your consideration. And following that, this is what we've done before, then you'd have a chance to respond to the form, then those will be tabulated, put together, then we'd come back again and talk about the overall rating and feedback you want to provide and suggestions you make. So we've kind of done it in two phases. One is get, have me provide you with an update of where I think we are, and then you can look at that and consider it, and then you give your own perception and feedback, and then we pull it all back together and talk one more time. And that's been kind of our process the last few years of just the, so probably in June, then we would do that second meeting, where we'd bring it all back together. This, if we use this format, what Sandy has created, it's not cumbersome at all. It's pretty clean. And it really would be, I think, pretty user-friendly, if these are the right areas. And so, it would be both a quantitative rating, just one for each of the domains, and then a place for comments and suggestions. So I'll stop there, Lori. But that's, so really, it's the content. Is it the right content to do the evaluation on? And does that process sound okay? And then, if so, then I'll work with the leadership of the board, and we'll keep it moving. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Well, I would just say my experience of trying to collect the information that we all prepared last year, and Jim, I know you did it for two years before that, and thank you for passing on your wisdom as we do this. And as I worked with Sandy on it, it was very difficult with the formatting. And so, this was designed more to be focused toward, I mean, I think what Bruce and I had talked about was, was that this is more focused on what the job description is and would be a more direct way of giving feedback. So that's where we brought this forward. At this point, Sandy has made this survey instrument that will then share and just make sure that this is the way to go about it. I mean, it's not the content of it, but it's the approach. So, Shelley?
So is this a discussion about whether we want to do this? Or has the survey already been made up and we're going to do it this way?
No, we're not going to, not necessarily going to do it this way. We've drafted it, and we'll share it, and then have a chance to talk about it. But I just wanted to begin the process of talking about the evaluation process and the feedback, both for the formal and for the informal conversation that we'll have in exec session. So.
So this is designed to be an easier tool for us. Is it going to be as useful to you, Bruce?
Well, I would think, just two thoughts I have on that. One is that, and truly, I mean, you might just at a glance say, I think there should be something here that's not here, then we should revisit our policy, and that's, that might be your takeaway. Or you might say generally, this looks like Or you might say generally, this looks like the right stuff that superintendents ought to be doing, let's try it and see if it works. I would say when I've gone through this, it generally seems appropriate to me. And by having the open-ended, if there were other things that you say, gosh, I want to say this, but I don't really see it here, I mean, there would be that opportunity. I think what we'd want to do is, two things, does it, does it interface okay for you if we try it once, and then are these the right areas, and certainly we can modify that as we go forward. So what I mostly appreciate out of the annual evaluation and the conversation that follows is, I mean, it's always nice to affirm if things are going well and it meets your pleasure and it's consistent with my job expectations, it's good to know that. But if there are areas that you would want me to do differently or do in a different way, then that's really what I want to get out of this. So if this tool helps us get there, so probably to me, the instrument isn't really quite as important to me as the outcome of the whole process, that I go into the next year with a real clear understanding of the things you want me to keep doing, and those things you'd like me to do somewhat differently or start entirely differently. So if I, if I have that at the end of the evaluation process, then it works for me, Sam. And then for the most part, we have been able to do that. I think really, I think it was the cumbersome of the data collection and maybe weren't quite the right criteria, so, and again, I helped create it, so I'll own some of that. But I think this, we thought maybe this would be just another way to try it. But yeah, I think overall Sam might be good with it.
So I guess it would be helpful to see the actual survey to know whether it's the right tool or not.
Yeah.
I mean, I look at this and it looks pretty binary, you know, either you do manage this or you don't manage that.
Yeah.
And I don't see where you build in the nuances without having seen the survey.
Yeah, so we can certainly, it's a Google, it's Google, so it's a Google forum, so what you'll see, and Sandy could certainly send that out tomorrow to you, and we'll just maybe market as draft, and, but it'll get you to see what the template looks like, and so you could see, and again, if you want to suggest modifications, it's, once we've done this, it's really, and it didn't take a long time to create it. So if we walk completely away from it, it's okay too. But it, yeah, we could certainly share that as a draft and then go from there.
And it would also be helpful to me if there were areas identified in last year's evaluation that were areas of adjustment or where you might want to try something different, to be able to have those to reference as we go through this. You know what I'm saying, Lori? Yeah?
Yeah. Dig up a copy of that, yeah, I think it's really, that's right. Jim?
Maybe you should just send them the copy of the last year's data we deleted.
Oh man, I've got a big file.
You know, I really like this. I think one thing this board had tried to do for a long time is work on the evaluation process to supervise the superintendent, and while I feel we got a little closer last time, it really did become a lot of big data that wasn't all that useful in the end. It was the content that in some ways we tripped over ourselves. These still have those big level, high-level domains, simpler, easier, hopefully the content will matter more, which is, as a superintendent is just, let us know, is the most important thing. So I look forward to seeing it and, you know, would certainly be ready to try it because it sounds like an iteration better of what we have been doing.
Tina?
Just from my one experience last year, I think it's great we're trying something new, because I had a very difficult time navigating the quantity of comments, and it was hard to find out what really popped, so it was, I hope this will help with that.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else on this? Okay, so we'll look for it tomorrow?
Now, we'll send it out, and I'm just thinking of timing. We have a, the agenda set a meeting coming up soon, and so maybe we could, if people have comment, Sandy can ask for it in a timely manner so that we can look at it together, because we do want to kind of just keep it moving and not drag it out too much, because we have that one work session scheduled. We'd probably like to know where we're going by that time, so.
Okay, any other comments? All right. The next item on our agenda are action items, consent grouping, and I'll read them. 7.1 Personnel Action, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, April 14, 2015 Regular Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, April 21, 2015 Special Meeting, 7.4 Acceptance of Donation Mesa Elementary, 7.5 Award of Contracted Program Management Software, 7.6 Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Membership Recommendations, 7.7 Nederland Middle Senior High School, Colorado School Council Corps, Colorado Department of Education. Do we have a motion to approve? Jim, is there a second? Tina?
Discussion.
Well, let me ask, is there any item that anyone would like to pull from this list? Nothing pulled. Are there any questions or comments on any of the items on the consent agenda? Sure, Shelley?
I'd just like to note that Doris Candelary's on the retirement list.
This, this time around, and I wish you were here to say how much I've appreciated what she's done at Sanchez and how innovative I think she is, and what a successful principal she's been for this district, and I just am sorry to see her go.
Thanks, Shelley.
I have just a comment, it's not even a question, but it's a comment, and it's about the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and I was really pleased, Dawn, when you spoke earlier, Bruce, when, Dawn, I think you said there were over 60 people who had applied, and I think this is a terrific list, and I'm very excited that those 20 individuals have offered their time and their expertise to help us with this oversight process. And I think it's a really important part of this whole bond. I mean, we've been saying all along, we're going to do it, we did it last time, and it's great, but I'm thankful for those individuals of being interested to take the time, and I just, I think it's a statement about how people feel about our district, and makes me feel good, and so go forth and do good work.
I just have to say, you know, so this is, there are a lot of things unique about leading in Boulder Valley, this would be another example, that, you know, you might have to think you'd have to actually go out and recruit and work hard. I mean, we had an abundance of applications, and so while we were working through this, I'd get emails to say, what's the status of my application, am I in, you know? So they know they took the time to make their application, did they get it in at midnight the night before? I mean, it's a real credit, as you said, Lori, to our community. As I look through this list, it's an impressive group of individuals, they'll do good work, and as they rotate out and others take their place over this decade worth of work, it, again, it's, as Dawn said, we believe it's a large part of what helped give confidence in our voters to make this level of investment, and we'll be accountable for that, and this group will work alongside with us to do that. So thanks, we encourage your support.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions? Sandy, will you please call the vote? Albright?
Yes.
Benford?
Fuqua?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is study items, Policy IKE.
I'll do a brief introduction to this, and Dr. Ron Cabrera, our Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services and Equity, is making his way to the podium. This is a policy, as you had a chance to look at it, that we have had. Part of what we were required to do, and was probably good for us to do anyway, is to relook at this policy. So some of the expectation around the REED Act was that we look at our policy on this and make sure our policy would be compliant with the new state statute. And so this has been a fairly long process, it seems, and engaging, so a lot of voice has been offered, and I just want to remind you of our process, is that whenever we do a policy revision, we not, we work through the process with the appropriate staff, and then we, you know, take it to our cabinet, our senior level management. We also have Dr. Tina Mew, President of the Boulder Valley Education Association, take it to her team and give us feedback, and then we bring it back and, you know, get other input. So this is one, like all policy, that's had a few revisions and a lot of input, and I think as we bring this forward for your consideration this evening, we think it's in pretty good form. It is compliant with our own state statute, and I will just say, the history on this around the REED Act is the year I joined the district, 11, 12, that's when the REED Act was introduced, and there was some pretty punitive language in the REED Act around students not progressing, and it was really, we felt inappropriate developmentally for students. And so we lobbied really hard on this bill, worked with the governor, worked with Senator Heath, at the time Senator Schaefer, President of the Senate at the time, and got, were able to get the language in the legislation softened quite a bit, which then we felt like when we would get to this point of revising policy, we could do what we think is consistent with our practices in the past and is right for children around the notion of advancement through grades and all, and consider all the developmental factors. So I would just say we're pleased about that. And so no law is perfect and probably no policy is perfect, but we think this is making good progress. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cabrera. Ron?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Thank you, Dr. Messinger, for teeing this up. Obviously in front of you, you have a proposed version of policy IKE. It was formerly titled Promotion, Non-Promotion, and Acceleration of Students, and during our review that Dr. Messinger thoroughly discussed, we thought that the word, not, just as an aside, that the word non-promotion didn't really seem to be in the regular vernacular. It's really about holding kids back or retaining them, and so we've changed the title with a real focus being around K-8, and so the new title would be Ensuring All Students K-12 Meet Standards, Promotion, Retention, Acceleration of Students, but really in practice, what we look here around students who are kindergarten through eighth grade, because that is really where these practices of retention and acceleration usually occur, the decisions around that. High school tends to be worked out around high school graduation requirements and the like, and if folks don't have enough requirement or meet the requirement credits, then there's different strategies used, and we don't typically say we're holding them back and the like. What I'd like to say also, as Dr. Messinger alluded to, you know, we have a regular process of reviewing policy, and when things come up, such as things like the REED Act, causes come back and reviewed and see if our current policy was able to match up the legislative intent, and we felt like the current policy did not. And so it gave us some license to rethink about how we approached this. So you can see from the red line version to what we have now, we've reorganized it some. Instead of breaking it out from elementary, middle to high, we really said we want to have a statement of what we think the process ought to be and what the intent is in terms of having kids in the most appropriate learning environment, and then address a couple of key groups that weren't addressed in the earlier policy. Those students who are English language learners, and what decisions ought to be made and how the process ought to be in terms of advancement, or retention, or acceleration, and those students with, who have significant difficulties or disabilities and have individual educational plans, and also what ought to be the process to help them as well. Part of our research indicated that we have significant numbers of students at risk, second language learners, and typically IEP, the research will suggest are usually retained at a higher rate than typical, and sometimes maybe because the process isn't right. So we had that included, and then, as you might know, that part of what we added in the new policy was certainly the intent to have parents, guardians involved in the conversation, along with the teachers, the principal, and also the implementation of the Assistant Superintendent of the, of the, of the level to be involved early on in the process, not at the back end. And so that, it was really thorough, and these decisions that have great intent and are serious can be made thoughtfully. So I think that pretty much tees it up, I think, if you have questions. We also talked about acceleration, let me finish that up, sorry. This acceleration was, was, in the previous policy, a lot of language is from the previous policy, as a matter of fact, and what we wanted to make sure we included with respect to that was beyond the typical standardized testing, a body of evidence that could be used to have some assurance that advancement for a student was around the mastery of standards, not just the student was merely achieving at a high level, a high, with his classmates and the like, and so it would be, again, the most appropriate learning environment. Okay? Dr. Messinger? Dr. Albright?
Thank you, Dr. Cabrera. So this is, as you know, a study item for your consideration, and we'd bring it back with your input in two weeks for actions. So questions, suggestions, comments?
Questions. Tina?
Yeah, I have two questions. The first is just the title of the policy. When you look at the policies under Section I, most of them have fairly, the, all the policies go directly to what they talk about, and there are several policies in Section I that could start with ensuring all students K through 12 meet standards, and it might just be easier for the reader or the parent to get to the policy if you were to strike the first line. And I, it's a good-spirited and well-intended phrase, but I don't think it serves the purpose of making it easy to navigate to the policy.
So have it read just the promotion, retention, acceleration of students?
Yeah.
So it's easier to detect what's in the policy?
To get to, yeah. Just because there's some space constraints on that index is the way it is now presented.
Certainly can look at that. Thanks, Tina.
And then the other one was just that sentence I sent you earlier, on the second page under retention. It states that retention may not be used if instructional strategies, materials, assessments have not been differentiated to meet their linguistic needs. If you could just speak more to that, it reads to me as a first-time reader that if the school failed to differentiate and the children, child didn't learn, we won't retain them.
Wait, wait one second. Where, what, where are you referring to?
I'm on page two, under retention.
Yes.
English language learners, second sentence.
The second sentence?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I just thought that was a very odd thing for me to understand it that way, but I think it might be a wording issue.
So let me comment on that, then Ron, if you want to add to it, I would ask you, but I think the spirit of this is, is that, you know, we have an obligation to the students to differentiate, modify our instructional strategies and the materials we use to meet the child's need. And so two pieces. One is, is that if we aren't responsive to that, then retaining them, and not again, the chances are, the outcome isn't going to be any different. And so for those of us that believe student retention should be a strategy of last resort, not a first resort, what this really does is put the burden on the school district to make sure that we are both aware of and responsive to the students' needs and differentiate appropriately. In the event that retention of a grade, repeating of a grade is the appropriate strategy, again, absolutely advocate that we don't just repeat what didn't work the first time, because in some cases it is about maturity and developmental advancement for the child, but a lot of times they need a different kind of experience and a different set of strategies to ensure their success, so that if they are going to repeat a grade or an experience again that we're confident that it actually can make a difference. So Ron, that's how I would interpret that, but if you want to add to that or expand.
I think it's pretty accurate, and I guess I'd say with respect to this particular line in, under the section of English language learners, it's really to recognize that the needs of an English language learner relies, requires different approaches in order to help with the development of language, the four dimensions of language, in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And if those aren't included as part of instructional practices, then it's probably going to be an incorrect diagnosis, if you will, about where the student's achievement level is and whether retention is the appropriate strategy here. And so this is consistent with language for second language learners in terms of, as we determine progress, what gets in the way, and what might be the most appropriate language. So this line is intended to say professional, have you done what's professionally correct in terms of addressing your students' needs? That's what the intent of the language is.
Okay, I think it's just, I don't know why, it just seems a little strange to me the way it's worded, but I don't really have a constructive thing to, you know?
Fair enough, yeah.
To make it better. So I just, and I don't know, I kind of worry about a school that has one English language learner that we could theoretically not, I don't know if the differentiation would happen into, like, to this in terms of strategies, materials, and assessments, if they're, if you're able to do that in a school that doesn't have an ESL program, but we still have, or that has a very small program, I mean, is that, I mean, it's, I think the accountability piece is great, but I don't know if it, I almost don't know if you, if you need that sentence. I think there's best intent that we'll always do that, and we have that stated in other policies and also other mandates from the state and from, like, the OCR, so I don't know if we even need to state this. I don't know. It's just a thought.
As a, I mean, certainly I'll defer to the best judgment of the board, but I guess I'd say, you know, it becomes easy to absolve ourselves of good instructional practice if we don't have program there. Now, obviously, the district's responsibility is to ensure that all our teachers have some skills to be able to help second language learners, if it's sheltered instructional practices and that type of thing, to help with language development, you know, we need to get the training out there, which this district has done, and we're actually, part of our new plan will reinforce that. But, so I guess that's my only caution about taking it away.
Thanks, Ron.
My only question when I read that too was, what if a student happens to have the bad luck of having several teachers in a row that really aren't very good at that or don't do that for whatever reason? Is there at no point, we just keep pushing that child through the system because we can't officially retain them?
No, well, I would just say, you know, maybe even stepping away from this particular language, I mean, having been a principal, a teacher and a principal, I mean, this is and should be a really big deal. I mean, the decision to have a child be retained or advanced is really a big deal. I mean, it's like one of the big things you work on. And so, as an instructional leader of a school, if I were in a conference with family and staff around this decision, and I'm the leader of the school and realize that we own this, that we've done what, I mean, that's not acceptable. So, and I don't think it's acceptable to retain the child. I mean, we shouldn't get to that point, and if we do, then we need to cross that bridge. But it really, that should not happen, and it isn't fair to advance a child that isn't prepared to go on. But we have a deep obligation to differentiate the instruction and personalize the experience for the student, so that we wouldn't find ourselves in that situation. I mean, that would be an error in the system that we shouldn't have and shouldn't tolerate. So I, I mean, I would like to tell you it would never happen, but it shouldn't happen. And certainly, I mean, a difficult year, and it impacts a child, is also a big deal. But repeated years would just be unacceptable, that, you know, if we're having a child struggling to that point, we ought to know, it'd be our principal's responsibility and our teacher's responsibility to have a deep enough understanding of the needs of that child, we wouldn't find ourselves in that situation. So, I mean, because this, there isn't much evidence that student retention works. There just isn't much evidence. And so, it's really an act of last resort. So, I, if I were in that very situation, Shelley, as a building principal and as a school leader, I'd say, so what are we going to do? I mean, one, we need to deal with the issues of the past. We get to take, we can't undo that. So that's a responsibility around the quality issue. But the other is, are there other ways we can close that gap and make up for that lost time, so they aren't just promoted over and over again? That's some of the concern of the REED Act, to be honest, that the fear is that schools do do that. I don't think that happens in BBSD. But, I mean, truth in this is somewhere in between. We shouldn't advance students that aren't prepared, obviously, but it's our obligation to see that they are prepared, or at least make every effort we can with appropriate instructional strategies, and student retention should be our last resort.
Yeah, well, I just think it's interesting that Tina and I both got hung up on that phrase, because
We can relook at it.
Something about it that doesn't sit quite well. And I think part of it is, like, you know, how would a parent know if these effective instructional strategies and materials and assessment had been used before there was this decision about retention? Like, it just seems like, I don't know, I'm not sure how, how you could sort all that out, actually, when the time came to make that decision. But, you know, assuming that what you're saying is true, that everybody's on top of it all the time, then I can see how that could be an effective description of this.
At least work towards that, absolutely.
So I had a couple other questions about this policy.
Could you just hang on one second to move on? Did you ever, Sam, did you ever comment on this?
Bruce answered most of it, but just to be clear, we're stating that one retention per school career is our limit. Is that a change? I wasn't sure, reading the drag through.
Well, it's a change that I made in the draft, but I don't know if it's a change from the original policy, Ron. I don't recall
And I agree with that.
How many drafts I was looking at.
For all the reasons you stated.
It's a change from, well, the original policy, the current policy doesn't have any limits stated.
Okay, okay.
So this does, does define it. Though, I'd say, in both policies, there's intent about trying to help the student provide the right type of interventions, which is really what you're asking about, Shelley. And then try to, so assist them along the way. But the, I'll just underline something that Bruce has said. The research is really pretty clear about the negative effects of retention. And so, you know, just one retention, either early or late, increases the incidence of all sorts of deleterious behavior, including, including high school dropouts. And more than one is pretty much a death penalty type of thing for a kid, because, you know, they have, all sorts of things happen. And so, the intent is, obviously, we know it does occur even in our district. But it ought to be, as you say, we've thought this out so much, we have, the type of interventions either have been ineffective, inappropriate, but the student is way behind, and how can we, you know, this may be, the extra time might be helpful.
Thanks. I have a
I would make one more comment, just, I'm on this, on this same topic that Tina raised and that you spoke to. I don't have a suggestion either for language, but how about if, would you look at those first two sentences?
Sure.
And see if there's a way to talk about what we're talking about. I think the issue that's been raised, which is, it's a somewhat negative comment. The expectation is that every kid should have those differentiated services.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Okay.
See what we can.
Thanks.
All right. Shelley?
Yeah. So around the REED Act, do, do parents have any input into that decision? Because it's not indicated here if they do.
Into the decision of advancement or retention?
Yeah, around the REED Act. It says here that if there's a significant reading deficiency, it's the decision of the school principal, along with the superintendent, I guess I should say assistant superintendent. Or does that mean superintendent?
It does mean superintendent.
It does?
Final, final
Assistant everywhere else.
Can be delegated, yeah. But, yeah, I mean, this is, this was a big part of the discussion, that ultimately they wanted the decision, the accountability to rest with the system. But to answer your question, best practices and what I would advocate for in BBSD, which I think happens most of the time, absolutely, family is involved with this. And families have different levels of involvement. I mean, you know, not all families are the same. But as a principal and as a teacher and as a parent, if this is going to work, if student retention is going to work, and it does on occasion, that it is the right strategies, I believe you absolutely have to have the family involved. And so, I just think, again, it's one of those threshold issues. But ultimately, the final decision does rest with the superintendent.
So could we add some language about parents being involved in that decision, in those discussions?
Ron, do you want to comment on that?
I'm picking up what you're saying, if I may just say. In the section around, under the elementary, it says, so this would be in terms of a retention process.
Right.
It says here, "Consideration for retention may only occur after multiple efforts to intervene have proven ineffective. The recommendation to change the typical order of progress shall be made following the consideration by a team that includes parents and school personnel and the student when appropriate. After consulting with the student's parents slash guardians, teacher, and other professional staff, and in accordance with applicable law, the principal, in consultation with the assistant superintendent, shall determine whether it's in the best interest of the students to be retained in such reasons, retained for such reasons." So I think that addresses the involvement of parents in the decision-making around retention. As a quick aside, with the REED Act, when students are identified as being significantly reading deficient, then there's, there's a requirement for teachers and parents to have regular information and shared communication and meetings to kind of talk about the progress along the way. So that's going on along the way, before we get to this place at all.
Well
So am I, am I answering your question?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm sure it is, and I hope it is. But it would be nice if it was reflected in the policy right there, where you're saying that the decisions made by the superintendent and the school principal. Like, is there really no parent input at that point?
Well, no, I think what Ron read was the consultation with the parent must occur, but ultimately, it is the decision of the district. I mean, that's by statute, that we are, so I think the phrase that Ron read about consideration of the team, which includes parents and school personnel.
Right, that's in the whole elementary. I just think maybe it's not written that well, honestly. Like, to me, the
You want to call it out more explicitly?
Yeah, I do. It looks like the REED retaining, the retaining for the REED Act is very separate from the conversation that goes above it. But in fact, that consultation with parents is included in that, is what you're saying.
Yes, yes, that's the intent.
Yeah, it doesn't really read that way.
All right, we can do a better connection there.
So when we say somewhere in here that consideration for retention may only occur after multiple efforts to intervene have proven ineffective, is there something in, that's policy, so is there anything like in regulation that would say what types of interventions a teacher needs to go through before that is done, or is that all on a case-by-case basis?
Well, I would argue it should be on a case-by-case basis, because they obviously could look pretty different. But there's a process, a protocol, a checklist, that's more of a practice and around how we do it. I mean, one of the documents frequently is called the LIGHTS Retention Scale, which is a very thorough developmental review, and it, both where the child is and also where, what efforts have been made. I mean, it really, and having done these, you go down, you should go down a pretty long path, both on the child's side of this equation, as well as the interventions and the work of the school. And, so again, I don't think that's appropriate to be in policy, but
Right.
It certainly is appropriate to be in practice. And so, you might recall, one of the five areas of the strategic plan is called systems of support. And within systems of support is the multi-tiered systems of support. And so, as we embrace that and do that work, I mean, these actually walk hand in hand, because if we're doing systems of support the way we should be around all students, then this will be most formally addressed and those differentiated. So, I mean, they do need to go together. But again, probably not in policy, but certainly in practice.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it, you know, if a child is being considered for retention in one school, that they're going through the same process as a child in another school.
Well, that's a good point, Shelley. And that, I would say, has been one of our challenges, to be honest, is to make sure that we, I mean, our assistant superintendents and super, I mean, that is, having this policy and training around this policy and the practices we use, you know, with over, almost, you know, 30 elementary schools is really critical, that, I mean, again, we should treat each school and individual child as an individual, but we should have some common expectations and treatment around that. And just because they go to a particular school, they're more likely to not advance than they belong to another school. So that's, that's work that I would just say every school district has to work on, especially with multiple schools like we have.
Right, and I had the same question about high school, because in here it says, you know, interventions as appropriate, or, no, kids can make up credit as determined by the principal, or something. So I'm wondering if that might vary also, like, if a Boulder High principal might say, you have to retake that class, whereas another principal might say, you can go to summer school. Or another principal might say, you can do that through credit recovery. And maybe that's okay, that principals make those individual decisions. But again, it would be nice to know that every kid is having to do the same amount of work, you know, in some way, to keep up, or to gain that knowledge that they need to pass that course. You know, because we've had questions about whether credit recovery is really rigorous as the classes. So would one principal say you have to retake the class, and another principal might say you can do this credit recovery, which
So, Deirdre, I might ask you, so I'll reframe the question as I heard it, Shelley, if I miss it, then, but really, at the high school level, the decision to retake a class or be able to do an online credit recovery or other credit recovery programs, we have, that, I think Shelley's question is, how much discretion does each school principal have around that, or how much common expectation and opportunity would there be between schools? And I know you and I have had this conversation, that we give guidance on that. Again, I think we look at cases individually, but if you wouldn't mind commenting on that.
So it's, it's actually the school counselor who probably has the most influence on this, as they're working with students on their individual career and academic plans. A big piece of what is considered with whether a student would do credit recovery or repeat the entire course is how much of the original course the student accessed. For a student to be successful in credit recovery, they typically will have needed to access a great portion of that course. The idea is, the student has had some learning and needs additional learning, but does not need the entire course. So, so that's a big factor in considering that. We are, what we, we are strongly, strongly encouraging and pushing real-time credit recovery. So, we have, we have eliminated a lot of the repeating courses semester after semester. And instead, in November, when a student is failing a course, we want to intervene at that point and begin that student in credit recovery as much as possible, rather than waiting until the next fall, when that course begins again, for that student to repeat the course. Does that help?
Yeah.
Thanks, Deirdre.
Thank you.
Just a couple other quick questions. Is the only way you retain a middle schooler is if they fail two classes, or, I mean, is that the criteria, the only criteria? Because that's what it looks like in here.
Well, I imagine there's always other criteria, but I think these are the ones that we put our arms around. So, I mean, given our other comments around having early intervention and what we have tried to do, you know, so we want to make sure that as kids advance into the higher levels, that they have good academic core foundation. So that's what we're looking at mostly, and that's what, you know, I guess I'd say our group of folks thought was both, I guess, consistently practiced. This is actually is kind of current language, by the way, and one that we could probably monitor best.
So, Dr. Pilch, do you want to add comment to that? I know, supervising middle schools for a number of years.
Yeah, I sure do. So, what I have seen more often at middle level, rather than course failure resulting in retention, is students who socially and emotionally need that retention.
That's what I was thinking.
Yep, absolutely.
And this doesn't say that. This just says two academic classes.
No, but our policy allows us to currently do that, that, with the principal and the family working together to do that. And we should look at the language, but I, when I looked at this, I felt like we were still okay to do that. But typically, at middle level, that's what we'll see, Shelley.
The second paragraph kind of speaks to this. There are some conditions which may make it desirable for students to remain in a middle school environment, those sort of social, emotional types of things, or to be advanced. Sometimes they're beginning to age out, or something has occurred that perhaps being in the middle school isn't as good of an environment as maybe at the high school placement or an in-between type place. And we did keep it broad with some intention, you know.
Yeah. Okay, the only other question I had was, I went and looked at some other retention policies of other school districts, and almost every one had a paragraph in there about an appeal process for parents. So, you know, I would suggest that we have a paragraph in there saying that if a teacher recommends a student be retained at grade level, that the parent needs to go through the complaint process.
Yeah, I think probably rather than to create a separate appeal, but let us look at that, Shelley, I think, having reference in the policy to what recourse a parent or family could take and really use our existing complaint process.
Right. The reference to that.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it's a super intensive decision, then it goes to the board pretty quickly, whereas otherwise, we'd go through the continuum. Yeah, we can look at that.
So if you want, Ron, I can send you the language I found that I thought was pretty good in that.
Sure, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate the input.
Other questions? Anyone else?
So I had a question, and maybe it's just a clarification. But is it your understanding, or is what the plan is, is that if a student is to be retained, the superintendent will always be engaged? Or is it just at the high school or middle school level?
I mean, the statute ultimately gives full, the final authority to the superintendent. Now, realistically, some of that will be delegated. And so, but I think to maybe Shelley's prior comment is that I certainly would become engaged if we couldn't reach agreement, and we probably would run the appeal process through, before going to the appeal process, because, you know, we would, that's normally what we would do in the event that we had disagreement at the school level, our assistant superintendents would become engaged, or our executive directors. And then, you know, ultimately, the parent could appeal it to me, and then, obviously, if I can't satisfy that with the family, then they, the next step in the public complaint process would be to the Board of Education. So, but I think, you know, I wouldn't be involved in every case. I am interested in this topic, because of my background and my interest in child development, is that, you know, I have asked Sandy Riplinger and Mark Schaefer, our assistant superintendents, to really look at our practices for the consistency piece that Shelley brought up, and just, you know, to be confident that we really are differentiating appropriately and as frequently as is necessary for the child, so this really is a course of last resort. So we are going to work on that. Beyond the policy, that's work we're doing internally.
And I think that's really the core, is to make sure about the child's learning. I mean, that's clearly what it is we're mostly interested in.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just looking at the words of this language of this policy, and I think maybe the comment that was made earlier about that first paragraph under retention of elementary schools is just a little confusing. It's like, the principal's figuring it out, but then reporting to the assistant superintendent, and then communicating with the assistant superintendent. It's just, it doesn't flow easily, and it wasn't really clear to me, when I was reading it, who actually was making the decision about this.
Okay, we can look at that.
So I would just look at the words a little bit
Okay.
About it. And when the superintendent's involved, the superintendent or designee. Because, I mean, the purpose of a policy, one purpose, is to be really clear about what happens. And that's what I'm just looking at. It's not necessarily the intent of the academics, but it's like, what could a parent look at if there was a question about it? So that's, that's where I'm coming from with, with the language on that, so. Anyway, that was my comment, I think. Are there any other comments on this? Okay. Ron?
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much.
Good work.
Thank you, Sandy and Mark, for your work on this.
Everybody's going to have their hands on this one, obviously, so thanks.
Okay, I see Bill's walking up to the podium. Because the next item on our agenda is the preliminary budget update, 2015-2016. Budget update. I'm sorry, I missed the meeting last week.
Yeah, well, welcome back, and this will close the gap for you. So between our conversation work session a week ago tonight and what Bill has to share with you this evening is very similar. Because really, not much has changed. And so we are still building on the assumption of what is in the School Finance Act, as far as the revenue side of this, and what we believe to be the case in our projected expenditures as we go forward. So that was what we reflected in our presentation and conversation last week with the Board of Education, and what you'll see is consistent tonight. I mentioned earlier in my legislative update, we're working on some other strategies, and Bill will actually reference that as a part of this presentation. But, you know, it's not done until it's done. And so we, you're not required by law to approve this budget until June. So if there's any additional good news that we could bring to you from the state, we will do that. And certainly, we think that some of the action that's occurring these final days will help inform us as we plan for the budget, even if we don't have confirmation of some of it. So anyway, I will turn it over to Bill. I think Bill has a couple of slides, really just to reframe the discussion. All of the documents that were presented last week are included in your attachment for your reference. And so you can go there if you'd like. But we also have simplified a bit more, so more of it a glance. You can see how these pieces fit together. So Bill Sutter, our chief financial officer is at the podium. Bill, if you would.
So this is really intended to be a continuation of the conversation from last week's budget work session. So, very brief, three slides with a title slide. So this is the highlights from the budget discussion last week. New resources coming into the district through the School Finance Act. And then expenditures related to compensation, transfers to other funds. We do have resources for the strategic plan, staffing for growth, increases in utilities, software contracts, and required reserves. So at this point, from the discussion last week, we were unbalanced by a very modest $600,000 overall. Again, we're talking about, you know, $250,000, $275 million overall budget. So this is just the net difference. Next, what we have is some information on changes since we talked last week. So this is new information related to an amendment to the School Finance Act that was just passed yesterday, related to projected increase in statewide assessed valuations. So the process is, the Legislative Council puts together a budget in December, which the state then proceeds to allocate to different places. They had a 7.8% increase in the assessed valuation that's related to the mills for the general fund mill levy for the School Finance Act for all districts. What's, a projection has been released from another agency within the state that's showing that perhaps that's going to be something more like 11.8% instead of 7.8%. That's about $70.8 million additional resources coming in off that increase in assessed valuation across the state. So the amendment to the School Finance Act was not an immediate allocation, but a commitment that those resources would flow into the School Finance Act to help backfill the negative factor and not reduce the resources from other state sources coming into K-12 education. So what we've done is taken a conservative look at that and said, if that even comes in at 50%, which we think is fairly low, that'd be about $35 million coming into the state. And BVSD is about 3.5% of the State School Finance Act, based on student count and whatnot. So that's about 1.2 million for BVSD. So in talking to some of my peers up and down the front range, where that 7.8% was a statewide average, we've seen anywhere from 15% to 20% from some of the front range counties coming in. And those new projections are getting released right now from the assessor's office. So then carrying that forward, we have that deficit balance that we first were looking at a minute ago. Additional revenue coming in, 1.2 million, then puts us in a positive position, about 600,000. Certainly, that's a pretty tight number. And we still have a little ways to go before we get to the end of the year and adopt the budget. But at this point, we are in a positive budget situation. And that 1.2 million covers the ongoing deficit that we had that we were discussing last week. So we're essentially in a positive position with ongoing resources meeting ongoing uses. The end.
So as we shared with you last week, this is tight. We're hopeful that the action in the last week with the, and what's occurring right now with the legislature, that what Bill just described on the last sheet, gets our head back above water with the set of assumptions we built this on. I would just say, if we are in good fortune and that happens, that we realize that or even more, you know, it would be my recommendation, at least for the board, to consider, and we'll know more as we make our way through the spring, obviously, is that, that we, you know, would earmark some of these dollars for a staffing reserve. Because this is early, and, you know, our assistant superintendents and team principals are working hard to get this all put together. But that would just give us some discretion as we finish up and go into summer and early fall. It's just nice to have that. In the event that we don't use all those resources for staffing, school-based staffing, then we could, you know, it'd be available for carryover. And some of this also, we met this afternoon to visit about this, you know, balancing this budget, it's obviously important fulfilling our obligations, but we always are looking ahead to the next year. And Tina, you had sent a note today about some multi-year projections. We would actually like to engage in that activity. We'd like to kind of see where we are with final revenue this year and with our commitments on contract. But then I think Bill suggested that we could work this summer to build in some assumptions and kind of roll that out. And then, you know, just have, you know, early fall, maybe, conversation about, you know, what we anticipate. Because obviously, we're watching what the state budget's doing in the revenue and some of the forecasts there. And we need to do some of that same forecasting ourselves. So we're going to respond to that, and I didn't get back to you this afternoon. But we think that that's, you know, we probably just need to get this base set first, and then we can begin to look ahead, so. Anyway, Lori, we'd be glad to answer questions about this, give additional information. Again, it's not a lot of new information, other than this piece we're working on at the state level right now that gives us a little bit of additional hope. But again, just reiterate, this would allow us to do the compensation adjustment for all employee groups that we've talked about, and their health benefits, their retirement, as well as their base adjustment. And also invest $2 million towards anticipated new students in our projections so that our class size index, is what we refer to, it does not increase. It would stay the same next year. That's that $2 million investment that really takes care of the commitment we've already made for this year, as we described last week, and also anticipating what will be needed next year. So that we kind of hold our own on our class size index going forward. So those two things in combination more than use our new revenue, as you noted in the presentation. But I think we can still balance the budget. We will balance the budget either way. But it'll be easier to balance the budget if we get this additional revenue from the state and this last amendment. So with that, Lori, I'd be glad to answer any questions from members of the board or provide more information if it's helpful.
Is that PowerPoint available to us?
I don't think we have loaded that PowerPoint yet on the, but we can do that, Lori. We have, the other documents are in your attachment. We just finalized this PowerPoint this afternoon, but we'd be glad to share that with you. So you have it to reference.
It would be really helpful to have that in advance of our discussions.
Yeah, we can load that up on Board Docs. We'll get it to Sandy, and she can put it up.
Okay. Board members. Tina.
For the 1.2 million, when will we know? Will we get that, and when will we get the check?
Well, here's how this works. And I'll say this, and then Leslie and Bill and others will correct me if I'm wrong. Is that generally what happens in these kinds of situations with the legislature, if it, if there isn't an effort like we're making to earmark it or grab it, then it goes into supplementals, which gives them discretion to use the dollars for other state needs. And so whether it's coming out of the education mill or somewhere else, so that's what we refer to as the supplementals. So that would occur in the budget year, so likely mid-year. So, so that's how it normally works. So what this amendment calls for, this declaration, is that if these revenues are available, which we're pretty confident they're going to be, that they will be used for K-12 use. And there are some things we'll take care of first. And that's what Bill had on that one slide, is that, you know, if they've miscalculated the number of students, and so we need, and those happen in supplementals every year, if they miss it by a mark. So that's why he did that conservative estimate of half of it. I mean, we think that's really conservative. And they think we're being not as conservative as we need to be projecting the 11.8%. But, you know, these are county reports that we're looking at, so we're pretty confident. So, but we won't know, no, probably until January. I mean, that's when they normally deal with the supplementals, because that's when all the dust has settled. But, you know, we've had lots of people who have a lot of expertise, you know, from the state, look at this data. I mean, appropriately, they're being conservative. They're just saying, you know, we're not willing to take the risk of giving you the money now because until the assessed valuations are done and we see what our other needs for supplementals and K-12 are, we're not comfortable forwarding the money. We suggested they should be comfortable doing that out of the state education fund, but they weren't quite there with us. And so, but I think January to answer your question, Tina, will, and again, we think... So what you saw in the presentation is that we're using some of our one-time dollars available to balance the budget with these projections. And then this really allows us to backfill. Just reminder, this is ongoing money. So any dollars in that four million of one-time money we're using to balance this budget, which is the one part of the presentation Bill just did, you know, whether it's $1 million or $1.2 or $2 million, that takes that one-time money out and plugs in ongoing money. So any ongoing expenses, that's, it's not a benefit just for '15, '16. It's a benefit '16, '17, and beyond. So that was part of our motivation to do this, was that it wasn't just one-time money. This is a stream that we wanted to tap, and because it'll benefit us every year subsequently, so.
And is there an opportunity for legislators to put earmarks on it, or...
Until it's approved by the Senate, absolutely. Which, so part of the, our understanding is part of the handshake on the School Finance Act is they weren't going to do a lot of amendments to it. And so that was part of the resistance I think we had to overcome, was that if somebody opens the door, then that opens the door for others. But, you know, as of today at least, that both parties seem to think this seems like the right thing to do. And that, but yes, there's always a chance, I mean, including ourselves, where we suggested an amendment to the amendment would be that we take some money out of the school finance or the state education fund and send it to schools now. And I took another run at that again last night, and the door was closed again and said, no, we're not going to take that risk. I mean, what Legislative Council, Craig Harper, said to us, he says, if you're so confident, you take the risk, spend the money. And when it comes, you'll be made whole. And I said, okay, that's fair. I said, how about halfway in between? You take a little risk, we take a little risk. We didn't get much progress on that either. I get it, but we are pretty confident that it's going to flow. And so, and if not, we have the one-time money to back it up. But, you know, so we're basically doing what he's suggesting, is that we're building the budget on the assumption it will come, but we'll balance it even if it doesn't, so.
Jim?
So, having been on the board for almost eight years and seeing many budgets that didn't look like this, where at least we have no cuts, and we're actually funding some growth, and we're actually investing a bit in a strategic plan. It's, it's not the 8 million we had hoped for when the governor first came out with his proposal. I'm a little conflicted in whether they ran a bait and switch. Last year, we pushed and pushed to get more, more. This year, they said, oh, no, we're just going to give it to you, and then at the last minute switched. And, you know, we at least had a list of projects ready, if we were so fortunate. But it does feel a little bit like that was intentional on their part. But I'll say at the end, I'm still happy that this budget doesn't include cuts. I do appreciate the effort that goes into building a budget without a whole lot of new resources, without cuts, so, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Shelley.
Well, my concern is that the schools have come to us, as you know, with a lot of requests and a lot of concerns about wanting their school resource allocation replaced, more counselors, lower class sizes. And we're not able to do any of that with this, with this proposed budget. And what concerns me is that we are spending hundreds of millions of dollars in this district. And it seems to me like we should be able to come up with some money to help the schools do what they want to do out of those hundreds of millions of dollars. So I'm not happy with this preliminary budget. And I would like us to find some money to do some of those things.
I would just say, I'm not interested in taking and finding that money in the COLA. I think that's a very important commitment we make to all our employee groups, some of whom get by on a lot less than we may acknowledge. So that is sometimes the elephant in the room in these discussions. And I'll just say, from my own perspective, I think we want to provide that COLA increase for our employees going forward.
I wasn't referring to COLA.
I know you weren't.
If I could just comment, Lori. So I know I send you a lot of emails, and I assume that you just wait for each one to come, and then you read them twice, maybe. So there is a chance that some of my emails, you know, get lost in your spam filter. But I just wanted, one of the email I sent within the last week was, what has happened under the negative factor? I think that what you know is that this is impacting the state almost $900 million every year, and billions of dollars over the course of several years. And locally, our shortfall annually is 30 million plus. And what I shared in my email with you is it's $175 million that we don't have over the course of since the negative factor was created. And so, you know, it's significant, and it's impactful. And, you know, we've said more than once, as we've lobbied these bills, that we aren't willing to accept this as the new normal. Because what Shelley said is right, there are needs in the schools. And, you know, we are underfunding schools, not only with an underfunded School Finance Act, we're even, not even doing that well with the negative factor. So, you know, I think if we, over time, can't get this altered, as we talked last week, we may need to roll up our sleeves and talk about just running the business differently. You know, we were with the Fairview staff, Deirdre Pilch, Mark Schaefer and I were with the Fairview teachers one day last week. We go to all these school visits, they all kind of run together Wednesday, Thursday. One day last week, we did four that day, visits. But we spent the noon hour with 40 or 50 staff and really went through this with them. Just answered their questions about class size and, you know, the pressures they're feeling and the changing nature of our students and so. You know, I walked them through this presentation, basically, just talked them through it. And, you know, they just said, okay, you know, we get it, this is just tight. I said, it's really tight. And I talked about the impact this has had over time, and not just at the high school level, but at the elementary level, from full-day kindergarten to counselors. And so these are big-ticket items. I would just have to say, the takeaway sometimes when folks who aren't quite in the forest as far as we are in this discussion say, we're pretty amazed that we're still doing what we're doing. Given this scenario, and I think, Jim, you said it right at the beginning, it's pretty amazing. But if this is where we have to operate for a while, and we need to get some things in place, we're going to have to trade some things off. I mean, and that's probably going to need to be a pretty thorough process with our community, because there isn't anything we'll touch in that process that somebody doesn't want. Even if it's not in the schools, there are services that come out of this building and other operations that, some of what happened in '09, '10, when services that weren't school-related dropped 13%, is some of those costs got shifted to schools, which then compounded their reduction too. And so that's why we just have to be really thoughtful when we go through that. And you know that, I know you know that. But I just, and Sam, I think you addressed this last week, just to be sure we have a good process and take the time if at some point we choose to embark on that journey. Because, you know, we're starting in a really tight place, as every school district in the state is, some more so than we are. But anyway, this, that note I sent you last week, I thought was pretty telling about the impact this has had on us over time.
I received an email today from Tom Myers, who is not here today, who just continued to, and I'm just going to say, be concerned that we're not backfilling the money, the 2.25% or even a piece of it, you know, beginning to look back at the, at the negative factor that we've imposed on schools. And it's, it's something I have heard out in the schools is that people are very frustrated about it. And so it just puts us in a very awkward spot. I agree with you, Sam, the COLA is fine. But we still don't have enough money to do the kinds of things that we need to be doing. And we have not backfilled the cuts that we have incurred. As you say, Bruce said 100, whatever it is. $27 million. I mean, it's a tremendous amount of money. And it's devastating to our schools and kids. I guess, from my personal point of view, and I wasn't at the budget work session last week, but I asked Jenny to read a statement from me that it's, it's one of my highest priorities, is to begin to backfill some of that money to the schools. Because I think they're operating under a very tight budget as well. So for me, that will be part of, you know, in the final budget will be to look at, is there a way that we can backfill any of that money to any of those schools? And I get it, we don't have new money coming in.
And I get it, we don't have new money coming in, but I would still say, I think it's instructive to look at where we might be able to make cuts or more efficiencies. And I don't know if it can be done, but it would be my goal. On a sad note. Anyone else on the budget? Bill, thank you for your work. Thank you to your team for working with you to get this put together. It's complicated, and it's big, as you say, you know, it's a big budget, and thank you for continuing to work on it, and please express that to your staff. Thank you.
Lori, if I could, I just, well, Bill's, I mean, so, you know, we did this work last couple of weeks in the amendment that I described to you, which I think, in the long run, is going to have some positive impact for all schools, not just BVSD, but, you know, Bill Sutter, as the chief financial officer for our district, as I mentioned, Andrew Moore has a leadership role in our state association around the student data privacy. I just want to acknowledge that Bill does similar work at the state level and is highly regarded by our associations for his insight, whether it's public employee retirement or amendments to the School Finance Act. And so, we appreciate having his level of expertise and resource in the building, and I know other school districts and state associations really appreciate that, so I just want to publicly recognize Bill's work. So in addition to building a really fine budget for us, he's helping work on issues that impact all school districts. So, Bill, thank you for that.
Good.
That concludes that presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so, next item on our agenda is agenda setting. Any comments?
Lori, could I, could we just see a list of what's in the queue in agenda setting at some point? Just as a point of...
I can leave it off to you now, if you want.
Okay.
I already want to send you.
Or you could just send it to me.
We can just forward it to you as a Google Doc.
Yeah, thanks. I've lost track of the things I've wanted to put on the agenda and where they are in the queue.
We can just roll the future agenda items to you, to the whole board.
Okay, thanks.
Is there something you have on your mind?
No, not specifically, just would like to see the list, thank you.
Shelley keeps the best list, and Sandy, I mean...
Yes, you all have it.
I'll just resend the link so that you can access it again.
We too struggle finding our Google Docs occasionally, so, we get it. I have trouble finding this one occasionally. Future agenda items, but it'll come to you as.
But there are questions that board members have, and it's important to make sure that they be brought up, and it's a real good point, so thank you for that. It's a good point. Okay, any other comments? All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. This meeting's adjourned. Thanks.